It's just turned 7:05. So let's start the meeting right now. If anybody is trying to get in, Pasadena Media said that they will put them in the waiting room and then let them in. So, call to order, 7:05, ATC's August 18th meeting has begun. We're going to start item one, call to order, the introduction. I'm just going to say, bear with us, everybody. We, I'd like to thank Pasadena Media. Pasadena Media has been recording and filming our council meetings for many, many years. And now they, they're going to continue, take, pick up where they left off in recording our meetings from here on in.
You've still got a bad echo. I think somebody needs to mute.
Okay, if you're not muted, could you mute? And then unmute when it's time to speak.
Diane Akuri.
Yeah. Can you, is that, is anyone, am I echoing still? If you're not muted, please mute so we can continue. I'd like to thank Pasadena Media who's now picking up where they left off. And they're going to be hosting our meetings from here on in. They're going to be picking up where the library did. So I'd like to thank them for, for doing this. And I'd also like to thank the library who we couldn't have continued without. So this is a new beginning, so bear with us while we're teething the first meeting with our new host. So anyway, moving on, item 1.2, we'll call Councilmember Jones. And you are on mute.
Good evening. Please respond after you hear your name. Antonio Becerra.
Here.
Akuri Zimi.
Present.
Victoria Knapp.
Here.
Jennifer Lee.
Here.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Anne Marcusson. Jeff Simmons.
Phone her to him.
Gloria Sanica.
Here.
Nick Santangelo.
Here.
Patricia Sutherland.
Here.
Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Present.
Erin Cheetah. Dr. Reginald Wilkins.
Present.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
Sylvia Vega.
Here.
We have a quorum with 15.
Thank you. Moving on, item two, officers' report. Starting with 2.1, chairman's report. I just have a couple of quick things to say. The first is.
Excuse me, Billy, Billy. Over the agenda.
Oh, sorry. I do apologize going back. I did say it was a teething meeting this evening, so I have an excuse. Item 1.3, approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Councilmember Sutherland.
Okay. The executive committee met on August 11th and approved the agenda as it was sent to you. There have been a couple of changes since then. One of those is on number 4.1, which is our special presentation. And it will be made by Anders Corey, who I see is here, from the supervisor's office. And the second one, and Billy, we didn't hear back to where people wanted to put this. We have a.
Yes. I actually didn't have a chance to reach back to Sam from.
I did, I just want to know where to put it on the agenda.
Okay, you got it, okay. Do you want to split it? Is that what you're saying?
Right, yes. We're splitting up the, his usual report for parks. The, his regular report on parks is down on number 5.2. But there's another report on something that the parks is doing regarding the census. And we just wanted to separate that out. So can we own, just, just because we may have some room there, can we stick it under public safety reports?
Absolutely. Item 3.4.
Right. And that'll be Sam Estrada will be making the presentation there. Briefly, right, Sam? Briefly. And are there any other corrections or additions to the agenda that need to be made?
Councilmember Wong.
Yes, I'd like to do a very short report for Census Track 460301.
Okay, that would be 8.1. Anything else?
No. I don't have a report, but I got an email from Anne. She's saying that there's a lot of noise and she can't hear very well. Could something be done about the sound?
Well, I think we've solved our feedback issue here from the actual meeting. I don't know if the feed from Pasadena Media to the YouTube streaming channel is, is clear and okay. I wonder if they can check that for us. We don't have any control of that here in the council. But maybe Pasadena Media can look into that. But, Councilmember Wong.
It looks, appears a couple of people aren't on mute.
But I think the feedback we were getting because of that seems to be resolved right now with us. So I'm wondering if there's another issue with the feed from that to our, to our live feed. I'll let, as, as we have no control over that, I'll let Pasadena Media look into that if they can, find out what the problem is, and go ahead, Councilmember Knapp.
Before we move to approve the agenda, I just want to make the request that Census Track reports are about census tracts and not about other things. Yep.
Highly noted, and that's important. Because if it's not with Census Track reports, then it has to be approved by the executive committee and agenda sized. Okay, all right.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Okay.
All those, do we have any nays? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, for real this time, 2.1, chairman's report. I just want a couple of quick things. First of all, it was mentioned earlier, and I want to point it out here, we are in the middle of some rolling blackouts right now during this heat wave. You know, the power grids are running low, and there's been several rolling blackouts. I, we've just received something from Southern Color, Southern Color Edison that might be able to help. Can we get that onto our website, Councilmember Wong? From David Ford, I know you copied on the email. And it gives people some way to find out if and when and what group they're in, and how to get, how to get that information of when it could be happening. If we can get on the website, that would be great. So that one, I'd say thank you. Just one other thing I just want to say is, as you may have all heard by now, the 5th District Supervisor Field Deputy Susie Neema is no longer with county. Susie has been our field deputy, and correct me if I'm wrong, 16 years. In that time, she has been an incredible resource and advocate for our community of Altadena. Many of us have doubted Susie many times on many issues on a one-to-one basis, and I've gotten to know her and her commitment to us over the years. She's been a longtime friend and will be extremely missed. In communication I had with Supervisor Catherine Barga, she also made it very clear how important Susie was to her and the 5th District and county itself. I would just like to say, if you are listening, Susie, that it is obvious that everyone will miss you from county to Altadena town. We wish you the very best for the future and your future plans. And just know that you are, we are here for you, just like you've always been here for us. And in conclusion, I cannot say enough how huge a thank you it is from all of us and all the Altadena lives that you affected through the years of service. So thank you, Susie, and we will wish her well. If, I see some people clapping, so I know she, she is very well loved and will be dearly missed, so. And council members, please check your emails in case you have anything else to add to that. The, the acting deputy who will be at the local Pasadena Field Office is Savannah Moore. And so if any of you need to reach out to Savannah Moore, it is, her email is smoore@bos.laccounty.gov, so.
It looks like, it looks like she's on the call, too.
She's on the call, she's listening, she's, she's here with us this evening, so. Just wanted to, so introduce Savannah to everybody. And if you have any dealings, she, she's, she's already committed and said that she's there for us and reach out to her, any concerns that we should need to have. So welcome aboard, Savannah. I know you've been in the office already, but thank you and welcome to being our support link right now. And now I'd like to move on to item 2.2, the vice chair, Councilmember Sutherland.
The only thing that I have to mention tonight is that we do have public comment, which is on the agenda. And I have received four public comments, which I will read into the record at that time. That's all for now.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item 2.3, recording secretary, Councilmember Jones. The approval of the July minutes.
Councilmembers, you received the June 21st minutes for your review. I received comments and corrections back. I have incorporated all the comments and corrections, and I thank you for those. I appreciate you reading those minutes, getting those back to me. So I, I have incorporated them, and I make a motion that we accept them with the corrections that were made and that they be put on the town council website.
Second.
The motion, second, who said second? Was that Corey?
Councilmember Zimi, yes.
Councilmember Zimi, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? So moved unanimous. Okay, moving on, item 2.4, Councilmember Lee.
Hello, the, the report from the treasurer is that our balance for the Altadena Town Council is $2,118.20. Now, there hasn't been a whole lot of activity these months, so I think we're holding very well. And that is about it. I don't really have anything else to say, because I'll be, I'll be staying on as treasurer through until the election in November. And I'll be ready to help the next person who will be treasurer. So, so far, so good.
Thank you, and, and thank you for staying on and filling that position until the next election. Moving on, item 2.5, corresponding secretary, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair. So again, everybody, if you have any events, please let me know so we can keep the calendar updated, altadinatowncouncil.org. If anyone would like to send me any information from their community events, you can send it to dorothy.wong@altadinatowncouncil.org. And I don't know if it made it into the public comments, but I will just report on one thing. So the US Census has been shortened, and it will be completed on September 30th. It was listed at one point as October 30th, a month earlier. So you will be seeing enumerators around your town. So if you see them, welcome the enumerators, because they're helping count Altadena. So if you would like to find out more, we need to get Altadena counted. I don't know if anyone else had this on the agenda. But the, it basically helps shape our future 2020census.gov. There are also other links to other groups, but 2020census.gov. We are running out of time to count Altadena, so please welcome the enumerators. And that's it, thank you.
A quick question for you, Councilmember Wong. The enumerators, I, I think I was reading they're going to be doing door-to-door knocking?
Yes, they are knocking between the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. all across Altadena. And as I understand it, we are going through the final phase of Altadena. So if you don't get counted, the government isn't going to wait anymore. So people are going door-to-door, they have a mask on, they'll have a census badge and also a census bag. So, and then if someone knocks on your door and, and they are an enumerator and asking about a neighbor who might not be there, that information is really important. And again, this is a population count. So motivate your fellow Altidinos to help us count. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that. I want to say that how important it is. So if you see someone knocking at your door, you know, please take safety into consideration and social distancing, but please be kind for them collecting this information. It's extremely important. I believe I read it, it's approximately, one count is, is equivalent to $2,000 lost. So a family of five, over a 10-year period for the next census would be $100,000 lost revenue to our community, especially at times of crisis like this for COVID. So if you imagine how many families that, if don't get counted, how much money that relates to and how much will not be coming to Altadena during the next pandemic. So it's serious to think about. And please make sure that you, you welcome Dorothy and everybody else who's involved with the census.
May I, may I mention one thing here about the enumerators also? Because I'm, I'm working the census, too. And it has been so hot, that it is so wonderful when people in Altadena offer water or a soda. It is so welcoming and fantastic. And thank you so much for offering that to me, because I take them every single time.
Yeah, I got chocolate milk.
Oh, that's awesome. And thank you, thank you for saying that. The thank you to our community is important, that good deeds get noticed. So thank you for bringing that up. Okay, I'm going to move on to public safety reports. First one, 3.1, California Highway Patrol. And I believe it, I, we have it down as Officer Cooper, but I believe it's Captain, where did I see? Is he here, still here?
No.
No?
Nope. Captain Ramirez? Yeah, I see Captain Ramirez here. Yes.
Yeah.
That's who we want.
But he's on mute.
Yeah, Captain Ramirez, you, you are here, you on mute. If you'd like to.
There he is.
And then go off mute. Captain Ramirez, you need to go off mute. And if not, could Pasadena Media unmute him? Our host can unmute.
Okay, I think I'm on mute.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Town Council. Officer Cooper could not be here this evening. And I'm not a captain, I'm the Public Information Officer for the Altadena office. Not a problem, sir. I appreciate you welcoming me. And sorry for the technical difficulties there. So I understand that Officer Cooper, at these meetings, he reports on accidents in the unincorporated Altadena area that we investigate. My understanding from our Ex-Investigations Unit, they gave me the following stats. During the month of July, there were eight recorded property damage-only traffic collisions. There were three involving injuries. There were four hit-and-run traffic collisions, although that doesn't state whether there was any injuries involved in those, but there was four hit-and-run injury collisions. I'm sorry, there were four reported hit-and-run collisions. There was also one DUI collision or a collision involving some type of DUI investigation, but there were none that had any type of injuries. I also want to add that the Altadena Area CHP office remains open to the public. Currently, the lobby is closed, but as people arrive in parking up front, parking lot, they can call the office, the office number is listed on the door. We're still accepting appointments for VIN and salvage inspections, school bus driver testing. Unfortunately, when it comes to child safety seats, due to COVID-19 precautions, they don't want us going into the vehicles. So I am helping people via telephone. And I can answer as many questions as people bring up to me. They can call the office directly and ask for me, Officer Vince Ramirez. They can also email me at viramirez@chp.ca.gov. They can also, if they have questions that they believe they can get answered on the internet, there's a website called savekids.org, savekids.org. When you log onto that page, there's a link to the Ultimate Car Seat Guide. It has about three short videos that people can watch, and they're very short and to the point. They give you a very good view of how a child's safety seat should be installed. And after viewing those, those videos, people can still call me, and I'd be happy to answer questions if I'm at the office, of course. Again, I'm here for Officer Cooper, he could make it tonight. Captain Moulton had a meeting this evening as well, and he could not be here. But I know he may have introduced himself to some of you already. He's been at our office for the past two months. He took over for Captain Bonk, who since has moved to the Illand Empire. Again, if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Wong?
Hi, Officer Ramirez. So I've been receiving, and perhaps other council members have as well, a lot more people speeding during this time. So, you know, we can do perhaps a speed trailer or different things. But at the end of the day, how busy are you guys during this COVID time to be able to support any sort of speeding enforcement?
Okay, so we are actually out there, we are looking for speeders. We know it's been an issue for many of our freeways as well, as well as many of our surface streets in the unincorporated Altadena area. So we, whenever possible, we have the officers come off the freeway and go up and patrol the streets. Having said that, I was speaking with our captain just last week, and we're looking at tracking any type of calls or complaints regarding speeding. So we're in the process of pretty much enacting a new tracking system. And I'll be, I'll be working with Officer Cooper as well as with Captain Moulton on these problem areas. But feel free to call us. We will take note, we will give you a response if there's any specific area that you want us to look at.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, and we really appreciate you coming this evening. No more questions, and maybe we'll see you next month.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, item 3.2, the Altadena Sheriff's Station, Captain Jacobs.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good evening, Town Council. Thanks for having this meeting on Zoom. I want to go ahead and go over some of the stats for July. I am happy to announce we're, overall, Part 1 crimes are down 24% in Altadena. I do want to discuss a homicide we had on the 2nd of August. I know it's not in July, but it's relevant. Happened on August 2nd about 9:00 p.m. There was a male Hispanic victim, apparently started an argument with three other male Hispanics at George's Liquor on Fair Oaks. The suspects chased this male Hispanic victim down a block to Devarian, where they turned and ran about another three blocks. The suspects chased him and was able to catch him. A fight ensued. That victim was stabbed several times and transported to the hospital, ultimately died during surgery. Male Hispanic, I believe he's about 32. Homicide Bureau is working with our detectives very closely on that. And we actually have two people in custody responsible. We're looking for two more, two more suspects, three males and one female. So we are getting quite a few leads on that. And, and that's just one thing I wanted to announce to you guys, because I know it's, it's unnerving, but that's what happened there. So aggravated assaults, we had six incidents in July. I'll just go over a couple of them. There was two that involved a knife, a knife incident. One was on the 2,100 block of Summit, a rehab location, where two of the residents there got into a fight. One of the, one of the, the victim was put in a chokehold. He was able to get away and then threatened with a knife by the suspect, and the suspect was ultimately arrested in that situation. We had another one. You may have heard about this one, because it was, it became a barricaded suspect in the 2,000 block of Lake Avenue. It was a gentleman that was clearly mentally, mentally ill, chased a gardener with a machete, barricaded himself into a local business, that he broke into that business that was closed due to COVID, and barricaded himself and threatened to blow up the building and things like that. And we were able to get our, all kinds of resources responded. Our mental health evaluation team, our crisis negotiation team, of course, fire department, our partner's fire department were there. And ultimately, he did come out to the mental health experts. So if you're not familiar with that, it's, it's a deputy sheriff that wears like a polo shirt, does not wear a uniform, is very well-versed in dealing and de-escalating these folks. And they're also working with a social worker. So I think the, the people that are agitated suspects and folks that are off their medication are more apt to, to work with these mental health professionals and the deputy sheriff. And we have a much better success rate than uniforms sometimes will agitate them. So as soon as our Met team got on board, he, he turned himself in, so got the help that he needed. We had a couple illegal shootings. One was at Fair Oaks in Glen Rose. It appeared to be a car-to-car exchange. There was four 9mm casings found at the location, and there's no other evidence at this point. Detectives are looking for surveillance video information, if anybody has that. And then there was a, just a stray, a stray bullet that was shot from, from some angle on the 400 block of Stonehurst. And it went through the victim's house, and it lodged into their drywall in their bedroom. Fortunately, there was nobody that was injured. And the victim didn't hear any shots fired, so it might have just been a random, random shot. With that, our grand theft autos are down, as far as the stolen vehicles are down for this month, 26%. That's the good news. The grand theft catalytic converters continue to plague us. We had five stolen this month off of older model Honda Elements, a Toyota Sequoia. And all of these vehicles, again, were parked on the street. I did post something on social media that talked about ways to protect, you know, these types of crimes are happening. If not, engraving on the catalytic converters, a driver's license number, a license plate number that belongs to the car, so that we can identify these. If we find people casing in the area that have catalytic converters in their possession, we can instantly get a victim behind that. And our petty thefts of unlocked vehicles, as the summer approaches and this heat wave, I don't think it's going to be that bad at the trails, because it's too hot. But we're definitely seeing an uptick at the hiking trails with unlocked vehicles. Again, it's, it's people leaving, you know, valuables in plain sight and crimes of opportunity, we call those. So please lock your cars and put your, put your valuables in your trunk at another location before you get to your hiking location. In other words, don't open your trunk and put your valuables in there, close the trucks, people are probably watching. I want to talk about the fire incident that occurred, also occurred in August, but it's, it's, it's hot on social media, and it is a fire incident. It is, it is still under investigation. That was in the 2,900 block of Glen Rose at the barber shop there. It caused quite a flurry on social media, understandably, because it was a total loss. And it's very unfortunate, I know they have a GoFundMe site for that. And that's wonderful, the community's coming together. I just ask that everybody be patient, because I don't want anyone to jump to conclusions to think that, I've heard everywhere from a firebomb to Molotov cocktail to an intentional fire. None of that has been relayed to me by either our arson investigators or the fire department. So that is, is just news that people are sharing on social media. And it's really causing quite a stir. So nonetheless, he did, they did lose their business, and that's unfortunate. But there was some, some evidence taken from the scene that is in the laboratory awaiting analysis. So I will gladly bring the outcome from the arson investigators, from ours, in detail once that becomes available. I'm trying to stay out ahead of this, so that people are getting accurate information from myself through our arson investigators. And then there was another incident that occurred towards the end of July. You might have seen, there was a stolen vehicle. It, it was followed up through and ended at the 4,500 block of El Perito Road, which is a cul-de-sac. And it turned into, the, the individual inside was a female, and she barricaded herself in the car. So that caused a lot of helicopters and radio cars and, and people. But I want to thank that neighborhood for staying back and letting us do our job, because it was very volatile, the, the individual. very volatile. The, the individual was, I don't even know where she was from, like San Bernardino Riverside. How she ended up, where she ended up is anyone's guess, but she was clearly mentally ill. Again, we called out our crisis negotiation team, our K9, our mental health team, and again, a successful voluntary extraction after many, many hours of negotiating with her to come out, and she was taken into custody without any use of force. So we used a lot of our resources that Altadena is fortunate enough to have, because, you know, the Sheriff's Department has everything and anything that we need. And we utilize those as often as we can. So that's, that's really all I have. I'm open to answer any questions if the council has any questions.
Councilmember Azimi. And you're on mute, by the way, Councilmember Azimi.
Thank you so much, Captain. We really appreciate you. I say the month of July and August was very busy. Can someone imagine if this station didn't exist to handle the, the load that you, and the burden that you guys had to deal with in the month of July? So we are grateful that you are there. My, my question to you is, with respect to the, to the homicide, is it someone, maybe I just didn't hear it, is it someone from Altadena, or is it someone from outside of Altadena?
The victim?
Yes.
Yes, the victim lives, he is actually right there on the 600 block of Deverian. He was running home.
Thank you.
I also want to just, I just got a message. If, if, if you look at yourself on the screen, and you're not asking a question, and you do not see the little microphone with the red line through it, check your screen and press mute, because they're still getting feedback on the other end. So please look at yourself on the screen, and if you don't see that, please mute yourself. Okay, any other questions?
A follow-on question from the, on the link of homicide. Any established gang ties?
Yes, there is gang ties.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
Hi, Captain. Thank you again also for your great work with keeping our community safe. I do have, I had two separate inquiries from residents in my census tract that were concerned about mental health as it relates to folks that are homeless, perhaps that are living in the canyon, and they're especially concerned now with wildfire or just heat, like just for their own welfare. So are you guys, do you have capacity? Are you doing anything to, I mean, you know, with everything happening, I'm not quite sure your capacity to just check on their welfare and also, you know, should we be, you know, maybe it's another layer issue, but should we be trying to bring them somewhere safe right now for everyone's safety? That makes sense?
Absolutely. It's, yeah, exactly. We don't have people that are an actual mental health team that goes out and tries to offer help to homeless individuals, people experiencing homelessness. If we get a call for service, of course, we're going to handle that call, but we just don't have the, the manpower to go out and, and seek out these individuals, but we, we, you know, we, we offer help when we can. We still do have, our host team is still functioning, it's just functioning at a much smaller rate. So there, they kind of have streamlined their process for if, when they respond. They want to respond to five or more people in a, in a, in a location that is, you know, an encampment type of situation that you guys have heard about. I have seen a homeless person here and there, not necessarily in an encampment type of situation where we would call it a host team and go through the protocols of a two-week eviction process and things like that. But we are actively offering these folks services. Often, they don't want the services. They're Altadena residents, believe it or not, born and bred, and they, they want to stay here. Sometimes their family doesn't want to bring them in, but nonetheless, they, they feel comfortable here. They know, they know the town, and there's a lot of folks in town that do bring food and water and shelter and things like that to homeless individuals in Altadena. So it's kind of a, you know, a sensitive line to, to get these folks. Some people want them out. Some people want to help them. So we try to balance that with, you know, the humanistic side, of course, is first and foremost. And it is hot, and I do worry about the folks that don't have shelter and aren't as blessed as we all are on this Zoom call.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the council?
Hi, this is, this is Reggie. I just, the station fire was started by a homeless person who tried to put it out but couldn't. And the stage two fire looks like was started by a homeless person. We have an arson, but we spend hundreds of millions of dollars. This is not on the account of the Sheriff's Department, but as a society, we spend hundreds of millions of dollars on the fighters, but we have no one to help you out with this person, you know, who can easily start a fire that big tomorrow, right? It's just a little bit frustrating for me, you know, to see that. That's all.
Okay.
Any other council members? Okay, no more council member, no more questions. Thank you very much, Captain. We really appreciate you coming, as usual.
Thank you.
It's, it's very important that you're here and advising us and updating us and informing us. So thank you so much. Moving on, item 3.3, Altadena Fire for Maria Graykin. I did hear that Maria Graykin is held up with Al La Cañada Fire and does not have a report for this month at the moment due to the fact that they're dealing with the big fires that's happening. So due to unforeseen circumstances and the fires happening and them being inundated with issues right now, Maria will not be making a presentation. Councilmember Wong?
Thank you. So I just wanted to update everybody. I talked to Maria also, because the, some of the residents, again, as were concerned about the fires looming ahead as it relates to brush clearance. So I ended up, I don't know if everyone knows this, and I'm learning it, but at the end of the day, I ended up just calling Station 12, and then we sort of identified the address, and then obviously the homeowner, and then the property lines between Pasadena and La Cañada. So I notified both Pasadena Fire and then Station 12 said they would go up. So, you know, residents are concerned about brush clearance and dry, you know, dry conditions. Anyway, so that's what I did. And I, I talked to Maria also, and she would also kind of, we're, we are also looking at sort of brush and trail issues right now. So, okay, that's it.
Thank you very much for the update. And Maria did mention that she will be here next month, so please bear with them right now while they're dealing with the issues they're dealing with. So thank you very much. I'm moving on to item 3.4. And this will be a separate presentation by Sam Strata, who will also be doing his parks presentation later. But currently, he's going to give us a quick update and presentation regarding voting drop boxes in one of the parks in Altadena. So over to you, Sam.
All right. Thank you so much.
We're getting feedback from you, Sam. I don't know what's happening.
We'll be having more information at our next meeting.
Sam, I don't mean to interrupt, but could you, I don't show if it's your microphone, but we can't hear a word you're saying. It's all coming out as muffled.
Okay, hold on one second, okay?
Thank you.
Hello?
That's much better. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that. So the registrar recorder and county clerk, they will be installing what they are giving us, our 24-hour drop boxes for the presidential election for November 3rd. And basically what they are, if you're not familiar with these, they are stainless steel, basically tamperless ballot boxes that will be stored. One will be at Farnsworth Park, and one will also be stored at Charles White Park. These will be dropped off at Farnsworth and Charles White sometime in early October, and they will be installed, and they will be in place from October 24th through November 3rd. During the election, the public will have access to the box 24 hours a day, whenever possible. We are going to determine this week when, I mean, where they will be placed in the park. So we're going to meet with the register reporters to determine the location that will be appropriate for the community at Farnsworth, as well as Charles White Park. I did ask a few questions regarding the security, as well as when people will be able to drop off their ballots. Security-wise, these will be bolted into the ground, as well as they will be on a cement slab, so that way they won't be able to just be picked up and destroyed or tampered with. So I know people may be wondering like, well, how is it going to be secured? That's how it'll be secured. It'll be bolted into the ground, so that way it can't be taken away. Plus, it is over 100 pounds itself, so it should, I believe it's over 140 pounds without any ballots inside. And also, the slot for the ballots is only about the size of a, you know, a piece of mail, so somebody can't just drop anything inside of it. And as like a regular mailbox, it can't be, you know, you put in a large box inside of it. So this is going to be a really small slot for just the ballots. One thing that that was brought up too, was that they will be able to, somebody will be able to vote up until the last hour of voting, as long as they are in line to drop off the, their ballot. So they do not have any time pass after that, because the register recorders will be monitoring the line, and anybody that's not in line during the time of voting and comes after that time will not be able to vote, but they will accept their vote if it is past the voting time, as long as they are in line. The question also, how long will the box stay? Is it permanent? The box is not permanent, but the goal is to have these boxes in place for five years, which carries it through a full election cycle. There is no cost associated with the box. All costs associated with the box, including installation and removal, is up, is for, from a register recorder and county clerk. The ballot boxes will stay in place between elections, and they will be locked to prevent voters from inserting ballots in other materials. Ballots will be retrieved at least twice a week during the first 20 days of the voting period. For, for the last 10 days, ballots will be picked up at least every other day and potentially daily. All ballots will be secured at 8:00 PM on election day. The goal of the voter-by-mail drop-off locations includes sample ballots. In addition, voters can use the vote-by-mail drop-off locator tool on the register recorder county clerk website at www.lavote.net. We will be provide, I'll be able to provide one, more information as far as like where it will be located after Thursday, when we meet with the register recorder's office, and they'll be able to provide the exact location. So I'll be sending that out to the town council. As I know, voters in Altadena will be interested to see and hear about this come election time. So if there's any questions, I'll be free to answer them. I wanted to keep it brief, because I know we have limited time.
Okay, just one question for you, Sam, quickly, and I think you did mention this. That you have more information coming, but if you have any information, any PDFs or any other information you can share, so that the community can, can know about this particular program and the boxes, please make sure you share it with Councilmember Wong, who's corresponding secretary, so we can put it on our website and get the information out from there, and then everybody can share it from there as well.
Definitely.
Okay, council member now?
Hi, Sam. Any chance that there's going to be surveillance cameras? I can, literally, this is a very difficult time in our history of voting, and that mail slot is perfect size for someone to drop a match in. So I'm just wondering if we're going to have security cameras on those ballot boxes, because people are going to be a lot more comfortable turning them into someone or dropping them where someone is physically watching than to drop them if they can't, if they're not secure.
Yeah, I'm not sure about any security cameras. That's something that I can bring up when I meet with the register recorder's office. I could bring that up as far as like inserting something like that, like a match or any kind of lighter, something that we could ignite it. So I'll bring that up to them, and I'll report back to you guys.
Okay, I, I think it goes beyond the match. That's talking about security and safety period, and not just cameras on it, because it's not just a match. It's chemicals or all sorts of stuff. And so, the security and safety, especially when people are making, doing their democratic duty, and then we, you know, want to make sure they're secure. Any other questions for Sam on this particular issue? We do have another presentation for parks coming up from Sam later, but on this particular issue, no more questions? Okay, thank you ever so much, Sam. We'll be coming back to you shortly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the time. Now, moving on, item four. We have a special presentation coming from regarding Altadena Health during this COVID-19, coming from the Los Angeles County, and we're going to be going to the Health Deputy Anders Corey. Thank you for coming, Anders. We really appreciate it. So over to you.
Am I, am I unmuted? Just checking before I get, before I get started. Perfect, great. Thank you again for, for having me. Good evening. My name is Anders Corey. I handle health policy for Supervisor Catherine Barker, which includes amongst other things, all things COVID-19. I just want to quickly run through a few, a few detailed updates of the things that we are tracking, and then happy to answer any questions any of you may have, starting with data, then diving into testing, then potential reopening, and then kind of looking forward, what we can expect, what we all can do. Starting with data, as many of you probably know, our data over the last few weeks has really started to trend in the right direction. This is a direct result of we believe that the reclosing of, of some parts of our communities, which inevitably leads to less community transmission. Many of you have probably heard that there's been some problems with the state's data reporting system. And while that is still unresolved, we have still not gotten full data reporting from the state from a few weeks ago. For the last week and a half, we have had full data reporting. So the outstanding data was from the last week of July and the first week of August. So everything from the last week and a half has been full, complete, and updated, and also encouraging. We're down to about a 5.5% positivity rate over the last seven days. That's down from over 12% at the peak of our transmission from a few weeks ago. We're down to, we just only had just over 1,000 new cases today. We haven't had under 1,000 cases on a given weekday in over a month. So we are really trending in the right direction. And on top of that, most important indicator, our hospitalizations have decreased by 37% in the last month. There are over 2,200 hospitalizations on a given day in July, down to under 1,400, where we stand right now. So not only is transmission, transmission down, but also our ability to treat this virus has increased. Our therapeutics have increased. Our doctors understand it better. So not only are our hospitalizations lower, but also their, the stays of hospitalizations have decreased as well, as we understand better how to address this virus. Again, hospitalizations, case count are all very direct indicators that we're doing a much better job of combating this virus. Testing, which is always a question and concern of our communities, our capacity is still good. We've had fewer people being tested lately. We correlate that directly with fewer people transmitting the virus, fewer people contracting the virus and needing to be tested. Not, it's not a sign of capacity limitations. It's more of less people needing it. So that so far has been encouraging. Reopening going forward, this is a question that we get very frequently as our numbers start to drop down of what are we going to do? The county's main priority right now is ensuring that our schools can get open. That's our first and foremost priority, at least having the opportunity to be open safely. Currently, we are still higher than the state's threshold for reopening schools, so we're doing everything we can over the next week or two. We believe we'll get down closer to where the state will allow us to reopen our K-36, and then a few weeks after that, we expect to be off of the count, off the state's monitoring list and could explore potential other school reopenings. Now, the key thing to getting this number really down, and I know we're hesitant to reopen anything, the lower we get our transmission rate down, our total case numbers down, the easier it is when we do reopen parts of our communities to control the virus when there is spread. the easier it is when we do reopen parts of our communities to control the virus when there is spread. We've been tracking directly what other states have done, New York, Massachusetts, New Jersey, a lot of these east coast states that had really high early peaks. When they got their transmission rates down really, really low, when they did reopen, they were able to control it much better. It's a lot more manageable when you have dozens to potentially a hundred spreading cases and not thousands each day. So we, we feel like we have, like we have a better standing, better control of this virus. And that kind of leads us into going forward. Again, our cases are dropping. We understand that we cannot permanently keep things shut down and closed forever. But we also recognize that we reopen once and cases increase. And we want to, we, we want to do this, the safest way that addresses, completely covers and protects us against the health impacts of this virus, while also recognizing the severe and building social and economic impacts of this. Not only economic to our local businesses, our families, but also to the county's ability to provide services. We're expecting, you know, billions of dollars in shortfalls in the county's budget, which is going to directly impact our social services that are really vital to protecting our communities. So these are all the things that we're considering going forward. One thing we noticed last time, and I'm sure many of you witnessed when we did reopen some of our businesses, was this kind of gave authority to many people to socially interact very closely in other settings, whether it's home parties, backyard parties, other things that are in less regulated environments. And we really want to emphasize that as parts of our communities and our economy begin to become available again, to really lock down this inner community spread in, in close, very close, physically intimate settings that we really want to control against. Because we believe that was really a, a main driver in our cases increasing. People felt like they could go and do anything. Once we started to reopen, we really want to protect against that and make sure we're all doing our best. So that's the update that I've gotten those, on those topics. I'm happy to answer any questions or go a little bit deeper on any of that. If any of you have any additional questions.
Billy, I, I'm frozen, but I, I'm still here.
Billy, you're muted.
Yeah, Billy, you're muted.
There you go.
Thank you. Any questions from the council at this moment?
Yes, I, I do, I do, Billy.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you so much for, for coming, Anders. And I have a, a question that was given to me by one of the residents. This is from Ann Coleman, and her question is, there's been a report coming out of Harvard indicating that people exposed to increased levels of air pollution suffer worse outcomes when they get COVID, COVID nineteen, or severe illnesses and a higher death rate. It's well known that gasoline-powered leaf blowers are highly polluting. As of this year, the pollution put out by all the leaf blowers in California exceeds the pollution put out by all the sedan automobiles in the state. The Department of Public Health needs to call for a moratorium on the gas-powered meat, meat leaf blowers. I think that was her statement, but I think the question is, do you have an opinion, what's happening, anything, that kind of thing?
Well, as a staffer for an elected official, I'm not allowed to have opinions about things.
Oh, excuse me.
That was more of a joke. This is something I, this, before she left, this is something Susie Neber briefed me on, raised to our office, and we've brought before Public Health. And we've, you know, they're looking into, they're looking into the feasibility of different ways to address this. We do know that right now, the only real control mechanism we have is the sound control ordinance, which I'm sure you're aware of. That's the only way we have to really control the rate at which these leaf blowers are used. We are looking into what kind of ordinance we could, that could be considered. The challenge is, it would have to be, there's no way to bifurcate or variance off different portions of our county and have ordinances that only apply to them. So whatever it was would have to be countywide, which we have to continue. Once we get an idea of what it would look like, we'd have to explore with the other offices. We're definitely looking to what this would look like, the impacts of it. We have heard from other offices that it would be, there would be some, definitely be some opposition from, from other representatives, but it's something we're, has been brought to us and we're looking into.
Any other questions from the council? Councilmember Wong? First hand up, then Councilmember Marcusson, then Councilmember Becerra.
Yes, hi Anders. My name's Dorothy. Nice to see you on the screen. So my question relates to, I've been kind of trying to take a deeper dive now as our air quality, obviously from the fires, and just trying to get a handle on our, our own public health in Altadena. And so I was able to find a sort of a health report that sort of combined all of District Five under one health report. So I have two questions. One is, would there ever be any hope of us actually, you know, having a Altadena health report so we kind of understand our vulnerable communities? That's one thing. And then the other thing is, I have just realized, so as it relates to measuring air quality, the South Coast AQMD is our sort of overseer of our air quality. But then I just read, and I could see it on a local air monitoring, Purple Air, that the South Coast AQMD doesn't measure smoke. So if you looked at the South Coast report, it actually showed this morning moderate air, which in L A is healthy air. But if you look at the Purple Air, you could see clearly along the foothills, you know, from Sierra Madre across La Canada, Altadena showed unhealthy red, you know. So, so unhealthy to sensitive groups and above. So how are we really monitoring our health, you know, as it relates to? Because not only noise contributes to heart disease, but air also lung disease and all these things that are associated with COVID. That's it.
Yeah, I mean, we've got fires burning on both ends of our district, so I can't imagine that our air quality is healthy right now. I do know that there were daily reports that we get from our Department of Public Health indicate severe poor air quality right now, and that's what we've been getting, you know, for the last couple of weeks. So I know that our, at least county air tracker, air monitoring tracks that. I'll look into the AQMD one. I hadn't, I had not seen that, but I'll look into what they're not monitoring, what, while Purple Air might be monitoring. I'll look into that and see what their discrepancy there is, because I think you're absolutely right. That's obviously something that needs to be looked into. Regarding an Altadena health report, I will also look into how targeted we can get on our air quality health metrics. My assumption is that any regional or fifth district-wide health report that we have is really pulling from individual specific sources across the county and across the district. So I'm sure there is an individual source in Altadena, just need to find out how that is potentially published and released. The health report, was that pulled from the Department of Public Health, Environmental Health, or is that from somewhere else?
It was from L A County Public Health.
Okay, I'll think of that.
Yeah, thank you. I can send you the link too.
You can drop it in the chat and I'll copy it out right now and I'll run with it. Thank you.
And the Marcusson.
Um, hi, yeah, you mentioned that the county is watching what some of the more successful states have done. I honestly, the most disappointing thing in life is the number of people who are not wearing masks and not understanding or agreeing or whatever. But one of the things that New York State did was, they did a whole campaign on TV and other places about wear a mask and did, you know, ads with people saying, look, this does work and blah, blah, blah. So, you know, I feel a little bit like unicorns and rainbows coming out of the report. And I think that it's, you know, we've had big party houses, I mean, you know, there's a whole lot of really bad things going on out there. So it just seems like there might be some other things that the county could be doing to just try to make everybody understand this is, you know, when you say that we're doing so much better, we're not. So, you know, anyway, that's all. Sorry, my little, my little rant, you know, I'm stuck home alone. So, and if you look at the reports, by the way, if you look at the reports that come out, what do you guys call it? Incident report, right? The people in my age bracket are really, really low for getting COVID because we're all super scared and staying home. And, you know, the, the what, eighteen to twenty-nine-year-olds and the twenty-nine to forty-year-olds are having a grand old time. So, and getting sick like crazy. So it just seems like there's a better message that could be going out. I keep hearing about vulnerable old people, and it's not anymore. So, okay, my, enough of my rant. I'm done. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Yeah, no, I think to your point, vulnerable populations, the reason they've stopped being the highlight of the conversation is because they've all done an exceptional job of protecting themselves, to your point. And I think that was kind of what we're trying, the needle that we're trying to thread right now is, when you come up with a messaging of, it's all good, we're reopening, everyone feels like they could run off and do whatever they want to. So we're trying to emphasize that, yes, we're doing better. Because we've also, there's also been plenty of research showing that if you beat people over the head for months on end, that it's bad, it's bad, it's bad, they stop.
I understand, yeah.
So, yeah, it's, but I agree with you though. It's, we can't let, we can't let our guard down. That's our big thing.
Well, and is USC opening, UCLA, all of those, are they?
They're not opening. They're not going to be, we're not letting, universities are only going to be open for like medical training and for training essential workers is the only thing they'll be allowed to open for.
Okay, because, you know, Notre Dame, University of South, North Carolina, yeah. Okay, thank you. I am done now.
Thank you for asking your question.
Councilmember Becerra was next with the hand up. Do you still have a question?
Yeah, so I had heard that there was a change in the reporting that changed, that there was some information going from county agencies that was going to the CDC. And so they were tracking data and whatnot. And that changed, that some of the reporting changed over to the Department of Health and Human Services. And so I was just curious to know if in your line of work and your county agency, if you've heard of any issues with that or any lag in reporting to the agencies that are reporting up.
I know that the administration, speaking of the White House, they changed how they wanted data sent into their National Recording Center, and I'm aware of that. Honestly, I've been really hyper-focused on how we've had our own reporting problems in the state of California and L A County. So I've been kind of hyper-focused on the impacts of that. So I haven't gone into the weeds of, I know that I've heard anecdotally, to your point, there's been potential delays or confusion or inavailability of data. I've just been living in the L A County, California data, kind of focusing what we're going on here. So I don't have enough context to, to speak with that. And that's kind of what our, our experts have been only focusing on that too. They haven't really tried to get bogged down in the full national reporting cycle just because there's enough to keep us busy.
Thank you. Any more questions from the council before we move on? Councilmember Nat.
Hi, Sylvia, Mike, can you hear me now since you got mad at me last time? Okay, my question is really, Anders, around enforcement, mask-wearing enforcement. So I will say that I have a friend who traveled here from Massachusetts. Massachusetts was at the forefront, leading in terms of number of cases, hospitalizations, all of that. You know, when she was at Boston Logan Airport flying out here, everyone was in masks. They were not allowed into the terminal without a mask. They were reminded to wear their mask and they were escorted out if they took their mask off. They get into LAX and it was an absolute free-for-all. Nobody had on masks, nobody was enforcing anything. Nobody, she said there weren't even masks dangling from their faces. I was out just last night picking up food and there's a clear sign that said at this establishment, you know, you must wear a mask to place your order. And the four guys ahead of me, not one of them had a mask, all of them were vaping. And I felt badly for the proprietors because, you know, they're not law enforcement, they're not public health officials. But there's no teeth to telling people to wear a mask and then not enforcing at the point of entry that they wear their mask. So it's bothersome, it's just bothersome that we know that that is the key to slowing the spread. And we don't seem to have, some of our local municipalities have taken on, you know, fining people. But I really think that if you just refuse service, that that would be like the first line of defense. So I'm not sure, I mean, to Diane's point, the mask-wearing reinforcement on both ends, communicating it and then having some teeth on the back end seems to me that it's going to be helpful as we move forward.
Yeah, I think to your point, like those are some of the things that we're going to be living with and maintaining here as we find this balance of kind of moving forward safely in, in all fronts. And we have, we have talked to the folks at LAX, and one of the things that they've experienced is, you know, half the people there are from L A going somewhere else, half the people are there, are coming from millions of other places that they're coming from a source that doesn't take it as seriously. So I know that, that's been something that they've been observing is that it's just people that aren't, are coming from a place where they weren't required to do it or it wasn't enforced. We have been, it's tough. I think you kind of highlighted this. That there are some municipalities that have, that have chartered their police officers to go out and enforce, and they've written it into their, their city code that police officers have to enforce it, and they don't. And the police officers don't want to get involved with that. They want to avoid it. The county, we don't, we don't have the, we can say something, we could write it that you're required to. Well, we do write that you're required to, but we don't oversee the sheriff's department. So we can't mandate from the board's level that the sheriff enforce something because he's his own separate elected entity. So I think the, what we have been doing that's at least been somewhat working is we set up thousands of environmental health enforcement agents every week to every establishment that's open or is, or is allowed to be open or should be closed to make sure they are closed. And mask-wearing requirements is something that they're, that restaurants are cited for. They're not requiring the people there to wear a mask, then we cite them for. And this isn't us trying to defer blame onto businesses, but it's, we're, this is a collaboration. We can't be everywhere at once, and if you're going to be allowed to be open, part of that is being open safely. And part of that is requiring that people wear masks right now. It's just kind of a little step that we all have to take. But I think there is, I think you and a few other people mentioned, we are going to, there are some campaigns statewide. They're going to be starting in a couple of weeks. It's going to be TV broadcast everywhere. Really positive, uplifting, but also emphasizing that, that we're still in this. Everything you do, do it safely, wear a mask, things like that. This is an ongoing marathon. We're still coming with new ways to try and drill this home, but I think you got to hit, those people are fatigued.
Hi Billy, I just one more really quick question, and yes, that's what New York did, by the way, with the campaign. Yeah. So I had somebody call me the other day that said that there was a gathering of like thirty people all standing around. It happened to have been for an estate sale. Everybody, you know, there were people all jammed together and everything. And I think what I hear you saying for the next time somebody calls me, because quite frankly, I called all over trying to figure out who to tell, right? And I think the answer is nobody. Is that right?
No, we have, there is a reporting line for reporting.
Can you, can you, so I, I went through a bunch of my, you know, whatever those things that are coming out from county health. You know, the, the, I don't know what you're, I forget what you're calling them, the newsletters, right, that come out from county health. I didn't see anything. Honestly, I called Catherine's office and said, help me. And they went ahead and reported it to whoever. But could you make sure that people see somewhere printed out who to call if there are, you know, large gatherings?
Yeah, it's on the front of, of the Department of Public Health's COVID page. I'm pasting it into the chat box here. It's just a simpler, simple customer service line for reporting a violation.
Oh, okay.
I'll include my email here too, and if there are any violations that happen over the weekend or the evening, you can email me and we will get it to our environmental health enforcement. And they, not only do they go send a team out, they also coordinate with local law enforcement to try and get backup. It doesn't always work. I'm sorry, Dorothy, I sent it to you privately. It doesn't always work to get law enforcement out, but we do collaborate with them and.
Yeah, no, they said, they, yeah, they told me no. The sheriff station told me go away.
They, they don't want to, they don't.
I, that's fine. I mean, I just started there, you know, okay, so.
We've been sending people, we've sent a lot of people out to these house parties over the last few weeks.
Okay, and I will go look and see too where that is on there, because I feel badly that I didn't see it. Okay.
No, it's okay. There's a lot of information that's fairly hidden.
Fairly hidden, okay.
So we can report, so I see the customer call center is eight to five, and I've got your email address now. But the bottom line is, and I know Captain Jacobson, I've talked about this, we have a, an air- The bottom line is, and I know, uh, Captain Jacobson, I've talked about this, we have a, um, an Airbnb issue, a short term rental issue. Where there are these, you know, these house parties that are occurring in the evenings, late at night, fifty to a hundred people, all the things. So do I report the address to customer call center even if they're not open? Is that the best?
Even if the customer call center is not open?
Yeah, yeah.
If they're not, I mean, report it there anyway so it gets in their log, so they can have it in their system, but. I included my email there, just if it's, if it's the evening or the weekend, just send it to me and I'll get somebody over there immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're gonna move on. So one more question and then that's it. So whose hands up? Uh, Councilmember Wong?
Hi, uh, so thank you for all that great information. So. This is sort of a conclusion question, but since. Uh, COVID and pulling out just a little bit of health data, since we don't really have it and LA County Public Health, as I understand it. Is busy really addressing things that you've just described, uh, you know, in dealing with, uh. Public health issues of coming back. But at the end of the day, uh, I think we do have a shortcoming. Um, and it could be passing us by where we're really taking a closer look at our public health. Our current health and then the conditions that are most vulnerable are, you know, definitely things that come from. You know, even with noise ordinances, it's really almost impossible to do anything about it. Measuring our air quality unless we're really honing in on a plan. And we really need to do this with LA County Public Health. So. Uh, so I think that's why there's a lot of concern that came up from leaf blowers, uh, at one point. But clearly, construction has been essential. We've all been at home. People are working overtime. So. I've had a woman tell me that her, uh, young, the young men at her household are essential workers. And they come home at ten or eleven o'clock at night and then they're woken up by construction and noises like that. So. You know, like some is just our peace of mind right now, since we're going to be at home for a long time. But it's really an opportunity how we can really be, uh, proactive at really getting to, you know, the issues, which is. How, which is air quality, heart disease, number one by far. Um, and then Altadena with just, if you pull statistics out, is underperforming. And some of this data is from LA County Public Health, but a lot of it's, you know, two years ago. Or, you know, or you gotta find it. So I guess that's the plea from a, a lot of, uh, community members that are concerned. And myself that, you know, since we're in COVID and now's the time for us to come up with our new normal. It's really seeing how we can either participate in the health solutions. So again, Clean Air Day. A state of California Clean Air Day is the first week of October. Um, you know, and so we're all spinning in our bubbles right now. But I think it's a really exciting time for us to really understand our, our, um, our health issues and also just. Working with our community and we can't do it without LA County Public Health and LA County.
Their job.
Yeah.
No, I think you're, I'll, I'll touch on a very quick, I'll just respond very quickly cuz I know Billy, you want to move on. Um, I think you're absolutely right. There's going to be many, many opportunities coming out of this and. I think obviously there's many, this is a disease that attacks existing conditions, exact, and attacks poor health. And obviously there's a lot of technical things that we need to do to. Work on this in our communities, but also a cultural change about how we view health and prioritizing that culturally. And that's something, one of the things that I've been thinking about, uh, with our team is how do we kind of push a cultural change of. Prioritizing our overall physical health. Um, and hope that's one of the things that comes, not only to LA County, but nationwide. And I hope that's a change that comes.
I think, I, I think, whoops, I think that's great. Um, okay, I'm gonna, if it's okay with everybody, uh, we are running, uh, short on time. Uh, just to, we have, do still have an agenda to get through. So I want to thank you so much, Anders. I really, really appreciate it. Um, I appreciate you coming, giving us your time and, uh, and welcome to Altadena. And we hope to have many, many more conversations with you.
Thank you again for having me, Billy, and everyone. Great to speak with you. Hope to speak with you soon.
And feel free to reach out to me anytime if you need something.
Absolutely, likewise.
Thanks. Uh, okay, moving on, we're gonna move on to the Altadena Community Reports, item five point one, the Altadena Library with Nikki Winslow.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sharing my screen right now and I know not everybody will be able to see it, um, but I wanted to make sure you guys. Could, if possible. Um, so thank you again for giving me a few minutes to update all of you on what's going on in our Altadena libraries. We have continued to expand our curbside service offerings. We're now offering curbside pickup at the Bob Lucas Branch. And I'm excited to announce that we're now offering remote printing through curbside. So you can go to our website at altadinalibrary.org slash curbside. Upload, um, any print jobs that need to be done and then set up an appointment to pick up those print jobs. Cuz we know a lot of people may have computers but not access to a printer. Um, we're also offering copying services at the Bob Lucas Branch. So again, um, all of this information can be accessed at altadinalibrary.org slash curbside. Including hours and all of that stuff. In addition to all of that, you can also check out laptops and mobile hotspots through curbside. If you know someone who needs to check out a computer or internet to go, please refer them to us. Patrons can also send in pre, three D print jobs also. So again, all of that can be found, um, on our curbside page. And what we're doing right now is expanding what we're calling the Library of Things, which is, um, under catalog dot altadinallibrary.org. That's where you would locate the, the hotspots, the laptops. And we're exploring expanding library of things to include things like the telescope that we have. As well as some of the sewing machines and really other, um, things right now that. People really want to be able to check out from the library rather than have to buy it themselves. We have a survey right now that the community can fill out on our website. I don't have the. Um, URL, but if you access our website, we're collecting information about what people would like to see the library offering right now while we're closed as well. Okay, can you believe it's almost fall? It is pretty hard to believe when it was almost a hundred and ten degrees today in Altadena. I thought I escaped the heat by leaving Las Vegas, but I guess not. But fall is right around the corner. I'd highly encourage everyone to check out the Altadena Library District YouTube page. And check out some of the amazing virtual content and programs that we've produced since.
Wow.
Okay.
Did, uh, is it just me or did Nikki get frozen?
Nikki got frozen.
Okay.
Yeah, frozen.
Let me see if we can bring her back up cuz she's also shared her screen. So that's what we have locked on right now. Um, she was getting kicked off before. I actually did get a call from her to let her back in. That's why my phone was ringing earlier. Um, so it sounds like she is getting kicked out again, so. Um, if passing the media is on, cuz I, now the screen's shared, I can't, there we go. Um, could you let Nikki back in? If passing the media was there. If, if she doesn't show up again in the next couple of minutes, what I'll do is I'll move on to the next item. And then, uh, we'll come back and let, uh, Nikki finish off. Um, just so for, for time.
I can make a quick library announcement while we're waiting to fill ten seconds.
You have a library announcement?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so I just want to announce, Rita Dina, we've talked about it before, Wild LA. I just picked up. Twenty books. So if anyone wants to join the book club in Altadena, uh, we're doing them Wednesdays through, uh, through the fall. Uh, so our next one is tomorrow, Wild LA Wednesday's Book Club, August nineteenth. And this will be Water History of LA, um, and featuring the short film, The Aqueduct Between Us. We're gonna have special guest Isaiah Mendoza, cinematographer and editor. Um, and so that is the chapter on water. So even if you haven't started book club at the beginning. Uh, you can join anytime and I will have that on the website for an event and also on my Facebook page. So this is Wild LA Rita Dina and I have some books. That's it.
Thanks, Billy. Nikki just messaged me that she's logging back in.
Yeah, passing the media is waiting for her. She said she hasn't showed up in the waiting room yet. So they're waiting on her right now.
She's got an internet problem, she said.
Yeah. So, um, we will continue with, um, Nikki and allow her to finish her report cuz it's really, uh. We need to hear from the library and exciting things happening. But I will move on to Sam and then when Nikki gets back in, we'll, we'll come back to her. So, uh, I'm gonna move on to five point two LA County Parks. And if, if anybody sees Nikki come back on, please. Message her and tell her that she, we will bring her back into the conversation. So over to you, Sam.
All right, can everybody hear me? Okay. Okay, all right. So I, as far as the, uh, the summer camp that we had at Loma Alta Park this past, uh, July and August. Uh, we wrapped it up last Friday. We had, uh, a very successful, um, but very different. Summer camp at Loma Alta this summer. Uh, we had a summer camp esteem. And a sports mini camp and a cheer mini camp. Uh, the difference, as you may have been aware of, is that we had only twelve participants in the summer camp. And that was due to the new COVID guidelines. So, um, we had twelve in the classroom and they were physically distanced throughout the entire time. And we had a great program. The staff were able to implement the STEAM activities with the kids and they were able to. And implement the curriculum and had a great time, even though the kids had to stay physically distanced throughout the entire time. And they were able to enjoy their time with the kids and, um, we had no incidents of any COVID. During the time of the camp. So that was a very successful, um, achievement. Um, and during our sports mini camp, we also had, uh, six kids that were in the camp. Um, we had to keep them physically distant. So it was mainly just a, uh, program that we, uh, kept the kids socially, physically distanced. While giving them tutorials on different sports as far as basketball, soccer and football. So it was a great time that, um, the kids had during this hard time of COVID. However, they, it was something that our department felt it was needed to give these kids and the parents an opportunity to get out of their house. Um, and give them a recreational programming. Um, and I feel that we had a successful achievement with that. So it was great. And great work by the staff. Um, and it was a hard work to put it together, but we did it, uh, all across LA County. And we, uh, had no incidents, as I said, at Loma Alta. So that was, like I said, a very successful achievement for us. Um. Following our summer camp, uh, we will be having our after school alternative distance learning center at Loma Alta Park. This is gonna take place, uh, starting in September. So our target date is September fourteenth. Um, as of right now, we are in the planning stages of, uh, finalizing our curriculum for the STEAM. Sports and Fitness Cheer, Performing Arts and Arts and Crafts. Uh, the timeframe that we're looking at is gonna be Monday through Friday from seven AM to six PM. Um, the board office, uh, seems as though they have been approved, they have approved it, uh, for the alternative distance learning. So instead, instead of it normally being at places like Farnsworth, Loma Alta and all the other, uh, sites. Um, it's been designated to fifty-two sites across LA County in the unincorporated areas. So Loma Alta was selected as one of those. Parks for our department of, and so once we get everything finalized as far as budget and planning. Um, I will be able to provide more information to the committee, uh, so that way we can be disseminated throughout, uh, the depart, throughout, uh, Altadena. Um, I've already been in discussion with, uh, Odyssey and I'm waiting to hear back from Avison. Uh, then we're looking to also finalize with passing a unified as what we, um, what can be, uh, provided for their kids. Um, as I know many parents have been calling Loma Alta to inquire about after school for their kids and also extended care. For those that the parents are working. And then finally, um, we have our pad in motion and, uh, Congress, uh. Dorothy has been, uh, a great advocate with that program. So pad in motion, if you're not aware. Is that we close off the streets for the families to safely walk and ride with physical distancing needed during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, so people are able to ride their bikes, scooters, skateboards, and we've even had people walk, um, riding their horses through. So this takes place Thursdays from five PM to eight PM and on Saturdays from nine AM to twelve PM. Um, unfortunately, this Saturday is canceled due to the high heat and the poor air quality. However, um, our next date will be on September third and that is, uh. That is a Saturday. So our next day will be September third, um, at five PM and we usually block off, um. Loma Alta Drive and the route goes, Loma Alta Drive in Palm and the route goes up through, um, Sunset Ridge. And Dabney and through, uh, the lower level of Loma Alta. So we've been getting, um, a relatively good attendance with the program. So anywhere from thirty to about sixty people come on average, uh, last week, unfortunately with the high heat and the fire. Um, we had a lower attendance, but we, we don't really want this to be a, a high attendance program only because we are. Um, conscious of, uh, COVID and we are looking to have just a, a peaceful event where people can come out and just. Walk or ride their bikes and do, um, chalk in the streets and ride their scooters and skateboards and then bikes. And so it's a great event for the Altadena. Altadena community. So, um, I will be sending out the flyer to, uh, to Dorothy with all the updates. Um, as far as like, um, September through October. So our last date will be on October fifteenth at Loma Alta. So if there's any questions, uh, feel free to.
I have a question.
Councilmember Sneaker?
I have a question. Um, you mentioned, um. Twelve students that participated in the summer program. How were those students, uh, selected? Was that a first come, first serve or?
Yeah, so it was a first come, first served. So each session, we had, uh, three sessions. Each session was two weeks. So parents had the opportunity, uh, to register for the camp. And we initially had two, um, but I, I knew due to the, the COVID, uh, we had a lot of hesitation at the beginning. And we ended up getting a lot more people really inquiring about it towards the end. But. Yeah, we, it was a first come, first served and we limited it to twelve just because of the county guidelines. Uh, but we did open it up to a total of twenty-four, uh, to, to enroll.
Hmm, okay.
Any more questions? Okay, thanks ever so much. Uh, Sam, I really appreciate it and really appreciate you allowing us to split the two topics up. Cuz I think the voting issue should have, needed a standalone. So I appreciate that and thank you for coming. We'll see you next month.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, item five point three, Alternative Chamber of Commerce. I know, uh, Doug Cauliflower is not gonna be attending right now. Uh, Councilmember Johns, do we have anything, uh, from the chamber to report? Uh, at this moment, we have nothing to report from the chamber. We will be coming back. Doug was, uh, prior exposed this evening. He's gonna, uh. Be here next month. So moving on to committee reports, item six, six point one, Land Use Committee, Councilmember Wong.
Billy, did you want to go back to Nikki?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Yes, sorry. I was, I actually text Nikki and said I was, you were next up. So I apologize about that.
Oh, that's okay.
Nikki's back up and, uh, if you want to share your story again.
Okay, sorry about that, guys. What is up with my internet tonight?
You must live in Altadena.
So I think I left off on this slide when I got cut off and I was just pointing out that starting in September, we're gonna be offering. Virtual book clubs, live story times, seed library gatherings and more educational programs. So if you want to go ahead and visit altadinalibrary.org slash programs, the ones that, um, you need to register, you would just click on the link and jump on in. But there's gonna be a lot of adult, teen and children's programming starting in September. Okay. Uh, we've, in addition to that, we have partnered with the Altadena Historical Society to host the documentary, Can We All Get Along? With longtime Altadena Pablo Morales this coming Monday, August twenty-fourth at seven PM. That will follow our next, uh, Altadena Library District Board of Trustees meeting, which will be at five o'clock that night. Um, if you're interested in attending, please email altadinalhistorical.society@yahoo.com to register. And get the free limited time streaming link for the documentary to watch before his presentation. Okay. So I'm sure many of, many of you have heard that the Altadena Library District Board voted to take a ballot measure into the November third election. It was named Measure Z and will authorize to establish a community facilities district within our library district. That will generate stable local funding to continue to provide programs and resources. As well as the capital needs that we all are aware of for both buildings. A yes vote approves funding for the district's programs and services. And for repairs to both the main library and Bob Lucas Memorial Branch. A no vote rejects the proposed funding. I'd encourage all of you to check out, um, the website with information only that we're providing at altadinallibrary.org slash measure, Measure Z. I'd encourage all of you to check out, um, the website with information only that we're providing at altadenalibrary.org slash measure, measure Z for background, FAQs and more information. Just to touch really lightly on census, um, I'm sure, let's see, currently we're at 72.8% of Altadena households have filled out the census. Like council member Wong and Malone said earlier, we need to spread the word. We do have more signs. So if you're interested in picking some up to have in your census tract, please just visit the Bob Lucas Branch, um, during the day. You could stop by and pick up signs. Says we do have extras available. Uh, we're also excited to announce that the Altadena Library Foundation will be holding a virtual. The focus of, um, this fundraising effort this year is to expand our reach into the community through mobile services. As we are uncertain how soon we'll be able to open our doors to the public, this remote service will allow us to reach out even more to the people in the community. Please visit altadenalibraryfoundation.org for more information. It won't be an in-person gathering this year. Instead, there will be a virtual screening of the special library video on Saturday, September 26th at seven PM, which is when it normally would have been held. Bidding in a virtual silent auction with Altadena-centric items, including I think dinner with me. So you definitely want to bid on that. And a mystery wine pole pickup this week prior, the week prior to the video. And again, all proceeds support expansion of library services to better serve all of Altadena through a new bookmobile. So in conclusion, as actress and songwriter Lauren Ward, song actress and singer Lauren Ward said, libraries always remind me that there are good things in the world. So again, thank you for the time tonight to update all of you. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Nikki. Is there any questions from the council? I can't see your faces. Uh, I gotta pull you over.
I can stop the share. Yeah. So that might be easier.
Uh, any questions from the council? Uh, for Nikki? Do I see any hands? Okay. Uh, thank you. I really appreciate it, Nikki. And, uh, sorry about the little pause in.
No, no, sorry for the technical issues tonight.
It happens. I mean, in Altadena, we all suffer from, uh, connection issues. So we're used to it a little bit. Uh, thank you ever so much. And, uh, we look forward to hearing from you again next month. And, uh, if anybody has any questions for the lobby, feel free to contact Nikki in the meantime. Okay. Moving on, I, committee reports, item six, 6.1, land use committee, council member Marcus.
Yes. Uh, the committee did meet this month. Um, we reviewed one item as a presentation only. We took no action on that item at the meeting. We expect to be taking action on that item at the September land use committee, uh, meeting the first Tuesday of September. That's all I have to report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, item 6.2, council member Jones, the election committee. And you're on mute. Uh, Veronica, you're on mute.
Okay. The election committee report is as follows. The election, the election is now scheduled to take place in November. Early voting will be November 3rd and the regular voting will be held on November 7th. The election process will be following the Los Angeles County's guidance on public gatherings and meetings. Originally this year's election was scheduled for June 9th and June 13th. However, serious considerations were given in how to navigate the election process during the pandemic. The election committee recommended that the election be postponed until November 2020 and consideration of public safety. Due to the current crisis and county stay at home order, the election has been moved to be aligned with the national election in November 2020. Terms for council members have been extended until newly elected members are sworn in after the 2020 election. All Altadena Town Council members received a copy of the proposed election rules for the 2020 election. I am recommending that the rules and dates be voted into effect at tonight's meeting as set forth in the copy you received. If accepted, the rules and regulations will be posted on the town council's webpage for viewing under the election tab. The following individuals have agreed to serve on the election committee. Antonio Bersera, Bridget Brewster, Karen Gibson, Gloria Sanica, Victoria Knapp and Nick Santangelo. We will continue to provide updates through our website and virtual council meetings. I am making a motion to accept the rules and dates as I mentioned earlier in this report be voted into effect at tonight's meeting.
My second.
Okay. Before we take a final vote, I'd like to leave you with a little something to think about this election season. On this day in 1920, the 19th amendment was ratified, ending the long and hard fought campaign to win women the right to vote. Today we celebrate 100 years of women powering the vote. This ratification was the largest enfranchisement of voters in our nation's history. Yes, yet it was, and it was, it wasn't until 45 years later with the passage of the 1965 Voting Rights Act that black African Americans could fully exercise their right to vote. The 1965 Voting Rights Act was a step in the right direction where our country began to acknowledge the value of all people. Today, we still have a lot of work to ensure that every eligible voter can make their vote heard. Completing the census and registering to vote are two things that we can all do right now. I humbly ask that you work to ensure all Americans are guaranteed the right to vote and use that right. And I thank you and I thank you for the second, we can vote.
Hey, thank, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Jones. I really appreciate you adding that a little bit in there too. Um, that was, uh, very timely. Um, so we're going to go to the vote now. So all those in favor of.
Oh, excuse me, Billy, Billy, Billy. Are there any questions that anybody, any of the council members have before, before they, we vote? Because there are definitely changes in the, in, in the rules that you haven't seen before. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands.
Do you have any questions from the council? Or the election chair? No? Okay. So, uh, so we go to the vote. Um, all those in favor of accepting the, um, rules for the coming election for 2020, say aye.
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 Chair, I can't, sorry. All those opposed, say nay. No, and, and no abstentions? Uh, so moved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, item 6.3, uh, Safe Streets, Councilmember Wong.
Uh, thank you very much. So, uh, everybody, it's an exciting time in this really sort of awkward time of COVID. Um, and again, uh, Sam had mentioned, uh, the opportunities to get outside and active at, uh, Parks After Dark, uh, Pad in Motion. Uh, we had a really great, um, partnership with, uh, some really motivated young people led by their teacher from Altadena Pasadena. And we did, uh, chalk expression sidewalk, a crosswalk. So we actually created a crosswalk out of, uh, expression art, uh, chalk art. So that was really awesome. And, uh, the update on the slow streets, again, the county's slow streets initiative, uh, is a way to support, let me see, uh, the Slow Street Program is part of LA County's local emergency response to COVID-19. For more information, uh, you can go to, uh, you can Google is probably easier, or I have it on the Safe Streets link to our website. But it's, uh, publicworks.lacounty.gov backslash vision zero. Vision zero is an action plan that the county has, uh, put together to eliminate traffic deaths and fatalities in unincorporated areas of Los Angeles. So the Slow Streets Program is part of the county's local emergency response and it is prioritizing vision zero. So the Slow Street Program will promote goals of traffic calming, helping community comply with social distancing while wearing masks and encouraging physical activity. So I urge any community member, uh, listening to this, any council member, uh, to apply for a Slow Street Network. Uh, the networks are residential streets, uh, networks of streets, about 10 to 25 intersections, uh, and approximately two miles. And the county has, uh, approved, uh, because residents have applied. Uh, also in the Safe Streets Committee, uh, we have Census Track 460301. Uh, that's kind of leading into the Loma Alta Park area between Lincoln to Fair Oaks, uh, Loma Alta to almost Altadena Drive. And also Census Track 4611 has a network going. Uh, I think Mariposa is kind of the edge of it. Uh, Sacramento, Santa Anita, different streets where residents were concerned about speeding and they've created a little network. And I think that also kind of goes into Census Track 46, uh, 4602. And then, uh, streets have been nominated. So I think, uh, we need to get a network together for Census Tracks 4610 uh, and also 460302 and any other census tracks. So, uh, the county has, uh, assessed two of them so far, two of the networks, and, uh, they will be implementing them soon. So that's very exciting. That will lead to opportunities for serving, um, our community and, and thinking about traffic safety and mobility in our community. Uh, the other thing tomorrow, uh, our next gen bus plan is up for reconsideration due to COVID's budget cuts. Uh, so tomorrow there will be all kinds of metro and also through Thursday, metro will be, um, hatching out their budget. And so if you care about transit, um, please pay attention to metro, uh, metro, I think metro.net, but you can go and look up. And I'll try and post it also on, uh, the Safe Streets Facebook page. So again, they may be rethinking the next gen bus service, which is the first update of transit for 25 years. Um, and if you walk around the streets here, uh, metro is part of Altadena and our C Street Networks. Uh, so I think that's it. Slow streets, uh, next gen, uh, parks in motion. That's it for now.
Any questions before we move on to the next item? Okay. Moving on, item 6.4, Education Committee, Councilmember Lee.
Hi, thank you. PUSD Pasadena Unified School District is open. School started Monday morning, completely 100% online. And so far, so good. So basically, um, the nuts and bolts of all of this is that it began Monday morning, completely remote. There are grab and go breakfasts and lunches distributed curbside Monday through Friday at all school sites. So parents can come and pick up, uh, breakfast and lunch for their children. Every student has online access and a Chromebook. There is curbside, um, Chromebook tech support. Um, at, near, near high school that you can arrange to have your, pick up your Chromebook if it needed fixing. And, uh, there's a program in place to engage parents to support learning at home. And within the next few days, they will be announcing their childcare plans, which is a little complicated because it has to work with the state and the city of Pasadena, at least part of it with the city of Pasadena. But at this point, so far, so good. It was kind of hold your breath there and see how it goes. And at the end of Monday, it was okay. And that is basically the gist of what's happening with PUSD. And of course, we are all looking forward to going back to school because this has gone on too long. But, um, PUSD has done a phenomenal job organizing this. And when you consider that there are about, you know, 17,000 students, this is phenomenal organization. And, um, kids are in school on Monday.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions for Councilmember Lee?
I can just add that, uh, you know, Brandon was one of those and he's been online and, um, this morning, the first period, it was a little choppy getting onto the portal. Then it got real smooth and, uh, he made a lot of progress. He says, I have the same teacher Nathan did. Well, like, we do get a better grade than Nathan. But, uh, but yeah, he's motivated and that's great. It's, uh, it seems to be working out well. But we're, maybe need to go back to, uh, the normal, but who knows? And that's going to be right.
Everybody would wear a mask.
Yes. Yes.
My daughter was one of those this, sorry, go ahead.
Well, you know, one thing we, I don't want to say too much about it, but it'd be great if we didn't have to like make our own masks and get masks. But if we had a system whereby approved and safe masks would be ready for us. So we wouldn't have to mess around with handkerchiefs and stuff. But that's a different world than we have right now.
Yeah. Uh, my daughter's one of those that started school this week. So, uh, I have to say, yes, there's always expecting some kind of teething problems. But the students are actually bearing up surprisingly well. Uh, the young ones adapt very quickly. So.
Yes, they do.
So anyway, moving on. Thank you. General Public Comments, item seven, Councilmember Sutherland.
Yes, I am here even though my screen shows that I'm not. We have four items for public comment. So I will read them one at a time. The first one is from, um, Ann Coleman. This is for Altadena Heritage, uh, who invites council members, public health reps and the wider community to participate in our next third Thursday program online via Zoom happening in two days. Dan Mayby, founder, CEO and president of American Green Zone Alliance will give a presentation titled Going Green on Yard Maintenance. He will speak on the multiple environments, environmental and health impacts of gasoline powered lawn equipment. Dan will present alternative ways to maintain yards and grounds, ways that protect soil and wildlife, and how he has helped communities establish AGZA green zones, AGZA partners with quiet communities. Please register at altadenaheritage.org to receive the Zoom invitation. Date is Thursday, August 20th and the time is at seven PM. That's that one. The second one is from Elliot Gould. And I think he might have written this a little.
Isn't it gold?
Elliot Gould. Yeah. Elliot Gould. Elliot Gould is an actor.
Oh, shoot. Excuse me. Something was not, was not, you know.
It's all, it's late.
From Elliot, from Elliot Gould. So here's what he says. As you know, from the last Altadena Town Council meeting, I personally, as well as a lot of Altadena residents are against leaf blowers being used in Altadena. As I said in my statement at the last ATC meeting, Shirley and I have paid our gardeners extra not to use leaf blowers. And we found that there was no increase in the time they spend caring for our lawn, three houses on the property. So no extra work time for them. Altadena Town Council's leadership is urgently needed on the issue of mitigating the negative effects of polluting gas plow, powered leaf blowers. As you know, COVID-19 is threatening us and there are all sorts of studies, which I can share with you that show that leaf blowers create not only additional pollution in the air, but that they, leaf blowers contribute to the, to the, to the, I think he means threat of COVID. I ask for the following immediate action from my town council. Vote and send a request to LA County's Board of Supervisors to place an immediate moratorium on the use of gas powered leaf blowers in Altadena for the duration of the COVID-19 epidemic. Evidence, did you know that one hour of operation of one leaf blower puts as much particular particulate pollution in the air as driving a Toyota Camry to Phoenix and back? Santa Barbara and other cities have already banned gas leaf blowers and as a result have lower hospitalization and death rates from COVID-19 than areas with much higher rates of airborne particulates. Altadena needs help from our elected officials. I ask that you send a letter to the Board of Supervisors asking for this life-saving moratorium. That's Elliot's gold. The next one is from, um, Joy Walters. And she says, uh, the bottom line is that we need a moratorium on gas powered leaf blowers for the community health. Harvard study has linked the slight increase in pollution in the air we all breathe leads to worse outcomes when a person who contracts COVID-19, including death. Many other studies are seeing the same results. We read daily warnings of bad air quality due to pollution and is especially bad for those who experience respiratory ailments such as asthma. Why would we want to add more pollution? Our gardeners in particular, who rarely receive training, rarely wear mask, are breathing in the toxin from the motor exhausts such as nitrous oxides, volatile organic compounds, carbon monoxide, and the pollutants that are kicked up from the ground such as spores, mold, animal feces. An initial study by CARB show that the equipment operators were exposed to at least 10 times more ultrafine particles than if they were standing beside a busy roadway. Our young families are finding that their children will be staying home for distance. for distance learning and will be experiencing the higher stress levels of managing their own workload and monitoring their children. What they don't need is to hear startling and high levels of noise of gas-powered leaf blowers. WHO has already linked the higher decibel level to added stress, aggravation, increase in blood pressure, and even risk of heart attacks. Can you imagine what is, what is doing? Can you imagine what is doing to those operating the machines, especially when they are not wearing ear protections? Move, moving to the use of electric leaf blowers or rake broom equipment would resolve the noise level issue as well. According to the Public Health Ordinance, lawn equipment is exempt from any required noise level control. However, a call for adding a maximum noise level is also needed. I ask that you also tell Supervisor Catherine Barger to call on CSD to eliminate the exception L and create an ordinance to be added to 12.08.570 ordinance to guarantee that we all can experience less stress from noise pollution. So that one. And the last one is from Vicki Thompson. And she says, I am writing to ask you in the Executive Committee of the Altadena Town Council to place a moratorium on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers here in Altadena, and asking Catherine Barger and the LA County Board of Supervisors to enforce this by enacting a moratorium on leaf blowers for the county. I believe that this moratorium would be a time in which a transition to alternatives and the development of supportive opportunities could be publicized and enacted. There are many reasons why I, a resident of Altadena for over 25 years, am asking you to do this. My husband and I are active seniors who walk two to four miles around the community six days a week. Every day we walk, we pass many homes where gardeners are at work using gas-powered leaf blowers as part of their gardening routine. We find this activity very disturbing as it produces high levels of 2.5 UM small particulate matter in the air, air we are breathing in as we walk. This is not healthy for us or the others in the neighborhood. The leaf blower activity also produces significant noise pollution. This is evident not only as we walk, but also when we are at home, where we hear leaf blowers two and three times a day, every day. This causes disruptions in our activities and the activities of the households around us that now have children, as well as seniors, home for the majority of the day. I believe enacting a moratorium on leaf blowers at this time will significantly improve the air quality and noise level in Altadena. It will provide a time in which our gardeners can be supported and trained in effective ways to keep our yards and gardens in good health and looking attractive while also improving our air and noise level quality and providing health benefits for us all. That's the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's the end of public comments. The last item of the evening, which is Census Tract Report, item 8, Census Tract 4603.1, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you very much for this very full meeting today. And I want to end on some really empowering two stories in the Census Tract. Well, the quick before, we're going to have our community in Census Tract 460301 is actually meeting with and collaborating with our Forest Service Fire Department and Sheriff's Department and community to talk about fire safety issues. So if anybody wants to find out more, that conversation's going. And I want to give a shout out. Well, the other sad thing, which turned into a positive story also, is I was walking my census for the US Census, and I got a call about a sad story, which the captain talked about, but Great Cuts Barber Shop, Jeff Cathcart owner was standing there, and his business was, if you haven't seen pictures, you know, pretty much the entire building was burned. And he had one barber cut shaver that wasn't burned, and everything else was just melted. And kudos to our community for coming together. So there is a GoFundMe account because Mr. Cathcart has six children. He said to me, Dorothy, yeah, I know I haven't,